Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM on February 6th, 2024. This time I suppose the time for the Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'll call the Board of Commissioners of Cleveland County to order. Madam Chair, do we have a clerk? I mean, a quorum?
We do, sir.
I guess that's correct.
I'm getting confused by this one.
So we have a quorum. Next item will be pleasurable allegiance and invocation. This will be led by Commissioner Bridges.
Stand. Salute, pledge, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings you give to us, Father. We just pray for the people around the world in the armed services, Lord, that are fighting to keep us safe, Lord. We just hope that you would keep them safe. And Father, we pray for our law enforcement and first responders here at home. Just ask that you touch them and keep them safe as well, Father. It is an honor to serve. And as we go into this meeting tonight, Lord, we just pray that anything said and done would be pleasing to you. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Next, we'll recognize any elected officials who might be present. Next, I'll recognize Commissioner Hutchins to recognize any veterans. Any veterans present?
Would you introduce yourself in the range of service?
Linda Lang, United States Department.
Steve Madden, U.S. Army.
Dennis Stace, United States Air Force.
David Cotton, United States Navy.
Johnny Hudson, U.S. Army. Does any, all of them have one of the pins? Do you have a? Do you have one of?
Thank you. All right. Thank you for your service. Next, we'll recognize any law enforcement present.
Danny Hall, Public Affairs Office.
And next, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Chris Martin, Planning Office.
Martha Thompson, Legal.
Philip Stefan, Police Department.
Rebecca Johnson, Interim Social Services.
Rob London, Mike.
Sherri Martin, House.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for all that you do. First item, before you announce motion to adopt a proposed agenda, Commissioners, we have the agenda before us. If there's no additions or edits to the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
I'll say.
Our motion second. Any discussion? Hearing not all, or say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next item is special recognition, 2023 Governor's NC Works Award Distinction. Ms. Stanley.
Thank you. To the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners, my name is Annette Staley. I am the Director of Foothills Workforce Development Board. Foothills Workforce Development Board, along with Ross Solutions and our case manager, Ms. Cynthia Hoard, nominated Elijah James for the Governor's North Carolina Awards of Distinction in the category of Outstanding Team. Elijah was selected and won from among many individuals from across the state because he embodies the true spirit of NC Works and the workforce development. He is indeed an inspiring role model for North Carolina's young people and the entire community. If you would start the video, please.
Elijah James was 15 years old when he enrolled into the Workforce Animation and Opportunity Act, WIOA Next Gen Youth Program, of the Foothills Workforce Development Board in August, 2021. Elijah came to Next Gen with disabilities, which caused inflammation, pain, swelling, stiffness at times, and altered motion. His condition has not prevented Elijah from overcoming obstacles and crushing his goals. He has maintained honorable status throughout his time in Next Gen, and he continues to motivate others with his academic capabilities. He is currently a senior and is accepted in high school and college courses. Elijah plans to graduate from May, 2024, from Penn State Classical Academy with his high school diploma and an associate's degree from Cleveland Community College. He's participated in other Next Gen activities such as the annual summit in 2021, an entrepreneurial workshop in 2022, chess club, and multiple work experiences including Cleveland County Library and hospice of Cleveland County. His work experience supervisors agree that Elijah is a positive, hardworking, happy individual who enjoys learning and developing new skill sets. Elijah has demonstrated determination and persistence in the face of his barriers, and he continues to be successful each day that goes by. Elijah is always willing to problem solve with his case manager to determine the best course of action to exceed expectation and meet his goals. He has applied himself wholeheartedly in his work experiences and learned to numerous critical skills such as time management, organization, communication, customer service, problem solving, and teamwork. Elijah has been a proud Next Gen participant.
Thank you. At this time, I would like for Elijah James and his family that's here to please come forward, along with our case manager Cynthia Hoard. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to recognize you for being an outstanding youth leader, as well as a leader in your community. On behalf of Foothills Workforce Development Board, the Foothills Regional Commission, our Executive Director, Mrs. Dana Stansbury, we congratulate you on winning this honor on behalf of the state. Thank you.
Yeah, Kitty. Elijah, hold on one second. Commissioners, you got anything you'd like to say? Congratulations.
Yes, that's our safe congratulations, and it's amazing to see what you've accomplished.
It is. Congratulations. It's nice to see our youth is really stepping up because they're going to replace us old guys someday. So congratulations.
And I would just like to say I thank the Commissioners and the Chair for all you do for workforce development. We really appreciate your help and your support throughout the years.
We're honored to do it. Thank you.
Doug, can you take a step to the right?
It's always me.
It's always you there, girl. It's a typo, Kitty.
All right. Three, two, one. Let's get one more. Three, two, one. Perfect.
That's nothing. It's like, wait a minute. Elijah.
Last one.
Here's the certificate to go along with actors recognizing you for your award.
Thank you.
President. Thank you for all the due attention.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right.
Mr. Chair, can we give him one of our county papers?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Elijah. Give him one of our county papers. Put that on once in a while when you represent.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. I understand from the clerk, we have no one to sign up, so we'll forego paragraph there. You're in that. The next item is the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have been presented the consent agenda with a list of items in your packet prior to next meeting. You've had time to review those. So unless there's any questions about any of these, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion second to adopt a consent agenda as presented. Are there any discussion or questions? Hearing not all, this affair will say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. We have a series of these tonight. There's actually three of these. We'll take them one by one. So Madam Clerk, will you read that policy first, and then we'll start?
After the public hearing has been opened, citizens' speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their true name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker.
Thank you, Carrie. So at this time, I'll recognize our planning director, Chris Barton. He's going to come forward and present the first case. This is case 24-01. It's a request to rezone a portion of parcel 59471 from residential to neighborhood business. This is conditional use for telecommunication tile. Chris.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board. As the Chairman said, we have three cases for your consideration this evening. All three are requests to change the zoning of parcels. The first case, it lies along Webb Road, 422 Webb Road. The request is from a petitioner named Jonathan Yates, who's here with us tonight, and he's asking to change the zoning from residential to neighborhood business conditional use for the purposes of developing an area of 422 Webb Road for a cell tower. Towers are permitted in the neighborhood business, and being a conditional use, you have in your packet a site plan that was submitted showing the parcel that it would lie on and the location of the tower in relation to property lines. Also, since it's conditional, that also gives the board to adopt or approve any reasonable conditions to go along with the request. Typically, those conditions may address public safety or the harming of an area. This next slide shows a map, and there's, it really has two purposes. The first is it gives us a vicinity of where this tower is, and you'll see the parcel highlighted in black. And then within that black parcel, we have the area that the tower would be located. And you'll see on this map that it's along Webb Road, near the intersection of Beaver Dam Church Road, which is northeast of Bullen Springs. And then this map also shows the zoning districts of the surrounding area. And you'll see the R-20 and the R are both residential-style zoning districts. The next slide is an aerial map showing the property that that tower would be placed on. And again, that orange box would be the approximate location of the tower. And you'll see the parcel that the tower is on is a vacant track. It's large. It's around 40 acres. But there are some neighborhoods with single-family uses surrounding that parcel. And in your package, you've got a copy of this. It's the site plan submitted by the petitioner showing dimensions and the site location for the tower. And I'll, and on the next slide, we've zoomed in there to show the specific location in relation to the adjoining properties. And you'll see some dimensions from the tower to those property lines. And you'll see 218 feet to the west, and then 300 feet to the north, and then 400 feet to the other north. And the tower itself, let's see, will be a monopole style, and it will be 180, 178 feet tall. And that's a picture of what that tower would look like, the Stella Tower. In this particular case, it's a little unique because this parcel also lies in the county's airport overlay zoning district. And you'll see a map of that zoning district here. That orange and yellow color represents the outline of that district. What that means is that there's some height limitations for things that are built in this district because of the airport. The maximum height in this district is 184 for that, well, the max, I'm sorry, the maximum height for that particular site due to the elevation is 184 feet tall. So this tower, as presented, would comply with that height limitation. And then our ordinance, and I've got also on the slide the math behind how we come to that number, but our ordinance explains to us how to come to that, that, the height that's allowed on that site. Our land use plan, with any rezoning case, we always want to look at our land use plan and acknowledge what it tells us. And it actually has some language about towers, specifically broadband services, and it encourages improving the county, improving that service across the county. And it, there's some comments in our land use plan about how businesses and our residences rely on this service to perform jobs. And, you know, there's some public safety benefits to providing this service throughout the county. We presented the case to our planning board. They voted to recommend approval. And they commented, after hearing all, after hearing the review of the case and comments about the case, they noted that this would improve the broadband services throughout the county, and that is a needed item for Cleveland County. And for this case, the action that we're requesting is to hold a public hearing. And then you can either approve the petition as submitted, deny the petition, or approve it with any reasonable conditions. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone have any questions before we open the public hearing?
I do. What about the fall zone?
Good question. The fall zone for this tower is engineered at 50 feet. So the tower should collapse within 50 feet of where the tower sits. And that, the idea there is that it would collapse before it would reach another adjoining property line or any Duke Power transmission lines.
What happens if you get some of these high winds? And it don't collapse and it hits the power line? Or is something bonded or something says, okay, they're responsible? If it gets into transmission line, because you're going to check with Duke Energy? Because I do know that a project we had was next to one of the major lines, and they said it's a million dollars a day if a line goes down because there's so many people out of power. I mean, I'm not against the tower. I'm saying, do we have some safeguards if it happens? Is somebody liable?
We've shared the request and the site plan with Duke Energy, and they have acknowledged that they've received it. We've yet to receive any comments from Duke at this time. But petitioner is here. He can further explain the fall zone and the engineering behind that and how that works as well.
I understand the fall zone that you presented to us, but sometime a tower like that, if we get some of these heavy winds, could pick it up and move it further than to project it falls on. You know, I don't think I'm asking, in the event that happened, is the owner of the tower responsible for any damage done to anything?
Yeah, I'm not sure how the li, where that liability would lie.
Yeah.
Mr. Yates, can you address that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Jonathan Yates.
Sir, I need you to, if you can, just answer his question first.
Well, actually, I haven't answered yet.
Well, I need you to understand, so for your five minutes, I need to recognize you for that. So if you can't answer his question, I need to let the other board members ask questions first.
No, no, I can't. I was just going to pass up the fall zone letter.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
John, will you pass this up? And I apologize, sir. Jonathan Yates, and yes, Commissioner, this is the monopole design tower. And the way, and what I'm passing up to you is the certification by North Carolina Professional Engineer Robert E. Beacom, who will design this tower. And to explain it, and I promise I'm not going to break the equipment, when we think of a monopole, think of a straw. What the monopole is designed to do, Mr. Beacom designs it in a 500-year catastrophic condition. First of all, he designs it to the NCTI 222H standard. It's set for that part of Cleveland County at 109 mile-per-hour winds with a safety factor built in. What the monopole does, think of a straw, is designed so 50 feet down in the catastrophic wind, it bends over. That allows the wind to go through like a straw. We got to replace that piece. It doesn't detach, just like a straw bent down. And I promise I didn't break the microphone. So we had Mr. Beacom. He was the designer. He certifies it to the 109. And again, we're pretty close to power lines all over the southeast. In some cases, actually on top of them. So we've designed the 50-foot fall zone in. It is certified. And if we do have that 500-year event, it'll bend over like a straw. Also, sir, the event with the over-design on the steel on the tower, the event that could take that tower down, the power lines are probably gone already. We would not be, we would not be the effect on the power line with our foundation base and with the over-design on the steel. General, we are the last thing standing. We'd noticed in, the first big test I had was in Hurricane Katrina. As you can see, I'm not young. There, we, the only, the only problem we had with towers was when a boat or a section of a bridge was flying through the air like a missile and hit them straight on like a missile. Again, we overdesigned the steel. We take it to the NC standard, and we build in that 50-foot fall zone into the design.
Can you follow up? Good. Anyone else have any questions? This is the original. So at this time, then, there's no other Commissioner, there are no other questions from the Commissioners. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. We have three names that signed up to speak at the public hearing. So Mr. Yates, you're up first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Jonathan Yates, 105 Broad Street, Charleston, South Carolina. Good to be with you all tonight. I'm here with my colleague, John Palmer, from Asheville, formerly from Charleston. He just picked up that ponytail when he moved to Asheville, so I apologize for that. First and foremost, what's been amazing to me throughout this process to get here tonight, the two gentlemen right here, Chris and Henry, have been absolutely fabulous to work with, and I thank them. What we're proposing tonight, and we talked about it briefly a second ago, is a monopole-style facility. It is designed for Verizon Wireless and three additional broadband carriers when they want to serve that area. I have, if anyone would like to see it, if we get to that part in the questioning. There's an absolute need in the area. What Verizon is trying to do, and their competitors as well, if I'm in Wake County, New Hanover County, Mecklenburg County, my phone works pretty much everywhere. It really works. What we're trying to do is the rest of the state needs to be brought up to that level. This particular facility, what it's designed to do is improve what we call not only coverage, capacity, but in-building residential. We found with the younger homeowners, home buyers, a lot younger than me, when they're going to look at a new house, what I understand from the real estate agents, they walk through the house the whole time with their phone to see if it's working. And if it didn't work, and sometimes they go on to the next house because they hear a tower might be coming, but until it comes, it's not there. That is the purpose of this facility. We designed it at 178 feet. It'll have a three-foot lightning rod. And if we're allowed to do this, it takes us about 45, 60 days to put it up. Most of that works on the foundation, letting it set, then we stack the tower. After that, on average, Verizon would only need to come out there eight to 10 times a year just to do a little routine maintenance and check on it. It doesn't produce any noise, odor, vibration, fumes, glare. What does it do? It allows people to talk on their phone. It gives them access to wireless broadband. And more importantly, and I apologize, I do not have the exact number for Cleveland County, but the average number across the country right now is about 82% to 84% of all 911 calls come from a wireless device. And that is essential. If someone's in an emergency, they can pull the phone out of their pocket, off their hip. They can get in touch with the 911 folks. Those folks know what's going on. They know where they are and can help them get help. And to me, that's a big, that's a big factor. When you have an area that is insufficient with that, it's a lot easier to put, pull a phone off your belt than to go knock on someone's door and hope someone's there and they have a phone. But that is our purpose tonight. This area has a definite deficit, not just for Verizon. If we get into it later in their questions, I can show you where the other major carriers also could use an improvement in that area. And overall, what Verizon's trying to do is build up and have a robust network throughout the county. The property in question, owned by the Harrison family, 43 acres. There's nothing on the property but the Duke power easement. They were very gracious, and where they allowed us to place it is exactly where Verizon needs to be for their network to work. I'm here for any and all questions. We have my colleague, Mr. Palmer. He's an MAI appraiser from Asheville. He is available during the planning commission. Some folks have some questions about property values. Mr. Palmer has done a complete report on that that he will make available if y'all would like to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Palmer.
I'm just here, I'm just here to answer questions if you need to. I don't really have a statement.
Okay. There may be some questions. Thanks, sir. So next, we have Linda Steele. Ms. Steele?
Commissioners, and I'm just pleased that you allowed me to speak and voice my opinion. I did have questions that I asked these two gentlemen earlier because the, the tower, when he showed the picture, is literally right there in my backyard. Because last summer, I saw the survey or he was doing that. And my main concern is safety with a cell tower in my back door, and it's literally in my backyard. I'm a two-time cancer survivor, and from what I have researched, I know they say it's safe, and it could be. But you get conflicted information. And the information I have received, and I just, any of you, I would just pray, if you, will you go home, go to Alexa and ask her, is it safe to live near a cell tower, and see what she tells you? Because that's not what she told me, that it was safe. And that's what I am, a two-time cancer survivor. So that's why my, I'm here tonight, my concern, because it is when the picture of the pool, one house below, two houses below, that's me, right there in my backyard. And I'm thinking about the safety and the radiation. I know I use microwaves or whatever, but I don't think I would put that in my mother's backyard. And when you vote whether to approve or deny it, I mean, there's just so many children and houses in that residential area. And I know it's an open spot where they want to put it, but it's just surrounded by kids and people like me in my backyard. That's the cancer survivor. So that was my own concern, just the safety of it, so. And I am concerned because I don't want anybody to have a radiation drip or a chemo drip like I have. It may not come in the first year or so, but as years go on, because when I researched it, you could have eye cancer clusters and different things. So just take it under consideration. That's all I ask.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. That's everyone that signed up to speak. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do you have questions or discussion? Do you have any questions?
I guess a question I would have is, the last speaker talking about the radiation or whatever, can we have somebody address that, safety factor?
Yates?
Yes, sir. John, we prepared for you tonight a little deck on safety and discuss the safety of it. These are very heavily regulated, the emissions- These are very heavily regulated, the emissions and the power they can do are controlled by the federal government. This will come in at, with Verizon and all the cumulative on there, if all of them get on there, less than 4 percent of what they're allowed to produce. We prepared a little deck for you, just to give you a feel, to give you some examples. When people talk about radiation, there are two types of radiation. There's ionizing, which is like when you go into the dentist office and they're taking the x-ray and they have to put that metal shield on your chest. Then there's non-ionizing, which is what cell towers are. It's the same as car radios, television, Wi-Fi, Bluetooth, cell phones, light bulbs, wireless baby monitors, and TV remotes, everything you have around your house. The way it was explained to me, fully loaded with three or four carriers, you're about 4 percent. Every time I put this smartphone to my head, I'm getting 50 percent. To have any harm whatsoever from this tower, and it's been studied, studied, and studied, you would have to be at the height of the antenna, 178 feet in the air, for a long period of time. If you go to the page, let's see where it is. Gives you an example, the page that shows the picture of the tower. You have the main beam and the antennas. If you're on the ground below the tower, you're only getting 1 one-thousandth of the power. It is radio waves, they're designed, they go out like inverted pancakes. The further away, the less and less. But if you're on the ground, more than 80 feet away from the tower, and no one can be within 80 feet of this tower, 'cause they'd be trespassing on the property, you're only getting 1 percent. So, very heavily regulated industry, on what we're allowed to admit. There is, and we spoke to Ms. Lydia beforehand, we're gonna speak to her afterwards. There is on the internet, you can find all kinds of information about a lot of things. But take a look at this, this was prepared by Steve Kennedy. He is a radio frequency engineer. And you'll see in his analysis where he compares it to household items and shows in fact that it is absolutely safe. We have these in neighborhoods throughout the state. They're on hospital properties, they're throughout the state. As you drive around, you'll see these towers. But it's a fair question from Ms. Lydia, and we also will give her a copy of this safety deck.
Anything else, John?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious, 'cause when it's built?
Yes, ma'am.
Like, I went out there today, so, you know, there's a lot of trees and all that. Is that all gonna be cleared, or is just the area the tower will be?
Uh, no, no, ma'am, only a 60-by-60 area around the tower. Now, we are going, if you went out there, that road's pretty rough. We're gonna gravel the road, get it so you can get in and out. But no, we're gonna come in in a 60-foot-by-60-foot area. We're gonna put an eight-foot chain link fence with three strands of biwire, 'cause it's pretty expensive equipment in there. But we clear nothing out, only, only the 60-by-60 area around the tower.
And I'm assuming it's where there was some reddish stuff on the trees, right, as you go on back?
You saw the flags, yeah. So, only, only thing we clear is the 60-by-60. The road was already in there, 'cause it gives access to Bobby White's property behind there. But I, I drove it last week, it was pretty rough. I'm glad, I'm glad I had an SUV. So, we come up, level that a bit, gravel it up, and so it'll be easy access when Verizon and the other carriers want to get back in there.
I met Deb out there this afternoon, and we got our steps in walking down that road. But it was my observation that there is a, a lot of low woods anyway. But I just assumed that either it's gonna be developed later and there'll be a whole lot of houses around there, or the trees will just continue to grow and it'll be a pretty good buffer there.
One of the two, and we see that a lot. Working a lot in the Carolinas with these big PUDs, you know, the planned developments. And a lot of times, they come to us at the outset, at the start, and say, we know we gotta have, and what they call wireless now, they call us the fourth utility. I mean, we're infrastructure, we're not a regulated utility. But for a lot of folks, they don't have a landline phone anymore. And so, a lot of big neighborhoods coming in, they come to us at the start and say, how many towers do we need to cover this neighborhood? 'Cause we know our buyers want their houses covered. And we help them sort of plot it out where we can place them so they'll have robust wireless coverage throughout the neighborhood. So, if someone comes and does build houses there, that'd be perfect, 'cause the coverage will be in place.
Any other questions? We ready for a motion? All right, so, yeah, so it's decision time, so it's, we should either approve or deny the request, or approve with conditions.
I would, before you, I'd like to make a comment. I'm, I'm a residential contractor, so I've worked with a lot of engineers. And I've never seen one that got right to the limits and righted up that way. They cover themselves by going, so if they feel like that it'll fall in 50, it'll probably fall in 40. And, because that's just the way they do to cover themselves. Which is wise business, because if you don't cover yourself, you can, you can stand up to litigation later. And, and I know that area of the county does not have as good a cell tower as where we're sitting right here tonight, so. If you want to make that motion, I'll second it.
Well, I, I just make the motion because of the public safety aspects and the broadband aspects of it. And y'all are so prepared and answered all our questions very, very well. I'd like to make the motion that we approve this. Let me ask.
And I'll second.
So, we have a motion to approve the request for planning case 24-01. Heard any other discussion? If not, all is fair, we'll say aye. Anyone oppose? All right, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next case is planning case 24-02. This is a request to rezone 350 or 350 Range Road from restricted residential to residential.
Thank you, Board. Our second item is also a request to change the zoning of a particular piece of property located at 350 Range Road. The petitioner is Mr. Bobby Pearson, also the landowner. And the parcel is approximately four acres. And he's asking to change it from the restricted residential to the traditional residential. The differences between these two districts is that the restricted residential only allows, only, only allows the site-built homes and modular homes that meet the North Carolina Residential Building Code, while the traditional residential district allows those, plus manufactured homes and multifamily dwellings. The parcel highlighted in black, as I said, is four acres. It's located along Range Road, near the, the Mike Lefford intersection here. And this map also displays the surrounding zoning districts. The yellow is the restricted residential, and the white is the traditional residential. And the petitioner is asking to basically change from yellow to white. This slide shows an aerial photo of the parcel, it's currently vacant. There are, in this area, there are some single-family dwellings and large tracts of land. And there are also a few manufactured homes already in this area. And our land use plan designates this area as secondary growth, so both of these zoning districts would fit in with that designation. And the planning board recommended approval of this one. And they commented that it would be an extension of an existing residential district and that it complied with the land use plan. And with this one, we're asking for the board to hold a hearing. And they've got a couple options, a couple options to approve or deny the petition. I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Does anyone have any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, so at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. And we have one name, Mr. Bobby Pearson.
I'm over here, if you've got anybody that has any questions.
Okay. So, with that, then the public hearing's now closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions? And as you just heard, Mr. Pearson's here, if you have any questions of him. And we can ask Chris to come back as well.
I've visited that site as well, and it seems to be compatible with other things in, in the area. So, if there are no more comments, I would be willing to make that motion that we approve.
I'll second him.
I wish I had a motion seconded to approve the zoning, rezone request for case 24-02. Any questions or comments before we take the vote? Right here and on, all is fair, we'll say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, sir. All right, we have one more for tonight. This is planning case 24-03. This is a request to rezone a portion of parcel 5272 from residential to neighborhood business conditional use again for a telecommunications tower. Chris?
Our last item is another request to change the zoning. And this one is also for a cell tower. Location 2941 Blacksburg Road, Highway 198, between Earl and the South Carolina State Line. The petitioner is Southern Towers, and they're asking to change the zoning districts from residential to neighborhood business conditional use, as I said before, so that they could develop that property or that area for a cell tower. The tower that they're proposing would be 230 feet tall, and it would have a nine-foot-tall lightning rod attached to the top of it, making it a total of 239 feet tall. This slide shows a map, giving us some information about the location of this parcel. You can see that it's lying along Blacksburg Road, just south of Earl, which, which starts where the yellow parcels are. And then the state line is just south of that property, just beyond Buffalo Creek. The yellow shaded area is the site where the tower would be located on that property. And the property is, uh, it's approximately 40 acres. And you can see that the properties around it are also larger tracts of land. This, this slide shows a scenario and shows that that property, you know, what that property appears like. And then you'll see, you'll find that this is a pretty rural area where this tower's gonna be located. It's 230 feet from a property line, and it's over 800 feet from the closest home. And here is, like the last case, a site plan of the tower. And you should have this in your packet. And it again shows this parcel and the relative location of that tower site. And we have, we've zoomed in on that area where the tower will be, and it'll show you those dimensions from the road, from Blacksburg Road. So, it's gonna be over, it's gonna be 475 feet from the road. And over, as I said before, over 800 feet from the closest home. This tower will be a lattice style, and this is in the packet as well. And our land use plan encourages the improvement of broadband services throughout the county. And it states that having reliable broadband services is critical, and that lots of our residences and businesses rely on it for both internet and phone service. The planning board recommends approval. They acknowledge the land use plan and that broadband service encouragement. And they also noted that this particular site has a lot of large tracts around it, and it doesn't seem to be close to any other property lines. And with this case, you'll hold a public hearing, and you can approve the petition as submitted, deny the petition, or you could approve with any conditions that the board sees fit. And I can answer any questions about this one.
Mr. Jeff, I mean?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think we talked about it before, but you know, there's a private airstrip in our park in there. Would this have any effect on that airstrip? Or did you, anyone even check?
We, I, I've not located the airstrip. So, I'm not sure what the distance is of that would be for this tower. What I would say is that with airport overlay districts like the last case, it has to be an adopted district. And so, this particular site does not have an adopted district that we would apply in this situation. So, we, we couldn't require a height limit on this one because of the ordinance.
There'd be no safety factor or anything like being there, because it's about halfway between where the tower's going and flying gate.
The tower's near flying gate. Near flying gate, that's right.
Yeah.
Across the state line.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'll add, too, that the towers, they're all required to get approval from FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration. And I think that that would most likely be something that, that they would be mindful of as well.
Do you have any other questions? Does anyone else have any questions? All right, so with that, we'll open the public hearing. So, the public hearing is now open. Thank you, Chris. We have one name, Mr. Ralph Wingard. Did I say that right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Ralph Wingarden from Falk and Foster, 678 Front Avenue Northwest, Suite 222, Grand Rapids, Michigan, 49504. I'm here on behalf of Southern Towers and the applicant Stephen, or the landowners Stephen and Phyllis Surratt. And I'd also like to second what Mr. Yates said about working with staff. Really appreciate Chris and Henry and the stuff that they do to, to guide us in these applications. In this particular case, like the previous one, the occupant on, on this tower is Verizon Wireless. Southern Towers is the one that will construct and operate the tower, but the anchor tenant is Verizon. So, this, again, is part of Verizon's commitment to improve service throughout the county. This location is also designed, like the other one, to accommodate three additional future providers. So, AT&amp;T, Dish Network, T-Mobile, whoever else wants to come in can also be accommodated in this area. The public safety aspects and the broadband internet goal 25 were discussed previously, so I won't rehash those. We did notice in the land use plan a couple other goals that this helps. Goal, recommendation 13, talks about encouraging the development of agritourism to support rural land preservation and economic development. And recommendation number 20, support job creation and economic development in rural areas of the county. So, this also helps with people that are working at home, learning at home. In terms of agritourism, it lets people in rural areas kind of look up what there is to see, use the mapping function to find their way there. And then, if there is a farm stand or place selling crafts or other produce, they can use online applications like Square, Venmo, or some of those things to cash people out. So, it definitely supports home-based businesses, agritourism, and development in rural areas as well. This parcel, we feel, is an appropriate location, given the timberland to the south, there's not any homes in the immediate vicinity. So, we think it's a good, good location. It'll be an important part of the infrastructure for this rural portion of the county, as well as the nearby Earl community. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Board, any questions?
I do, and looking at the last one, the tower was 190 feet with 50-foot fall radius.
Yep.
Okay? You added 40 feet to it, and you went to a 230-foot fall zone. But I see the towers are designed different. What makes it that you could not use the same design there as you did in the previous one?
Generally, the rule of thumb is when you get over 200 feet, you go to a lattice self-support type design or a guide tower design. The monopoles, manufacturing usually is limited up to about 200 feet, and then it gets extra expensive. And, and in this particular case, we didn't provide you with a fall zone letter because the way this is positioned, it, it will fall in a shorter distance, but we didn't present that proof because we weren't near any property lines or habitations, so it wasn't a concern. So, we just showed you the full circle, as if you laid the tower out flat. That stays within property lines. So, there's no impact across property lines.
No impact now, but like you're talking about, for future growth of the area, could come into play.
If this parcel is developed, you could have, have closer homes. This is kind of on a hill on the parcel. There's, there's quite a change in topography, so if they were constructing homes, I'm not sure what the build would look like in this area, 'cause of the steep, steepness of the hill. It probably wouldn't be. It probably wouldn't be ideally suited for a residential subdivision right at the tower location. Also, also, we did go through the FAA process, and we did receive our determination of no hazard to air navigation from the FAA. That was issued October eighteen, twenty-twenty-three, uh, aeronautical study twenty-twenty-three-dash-ASO-dash-two-eight-seven-eight-zero-dashOE. And so they've, they've reviewed it and indicated that there's no, uh, danger to navigate air navigation. Thank you.
I, I think I heard you say that you were, this would cover all the way to Earl, Patterson Springs?
Um, yeah, this would.
The coverage.
Yeah, fill in the gap. They're kind of slowly building the system throughout the rural parts of the county to kind of have seamless coverage, and so.
Well, I know that area is slim in service down there.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
So the public hearing is now closed. Wanted to make sure I didn't miss something. So we had quite a few questions. Do you guys, uh, does anyone have any other questions before we take up the side? Okay.
Well, Johnny, uh, brought up some good questions, but, uh, it is a very rural area, and I think if somebody's going to come in there and build, it, it, it should be on them, and they shouldn't build a house right under the fall zone of the, of, uh, the tower. So I would be inclined to approve it.
Is that a motion?
That's what's.
Could be.
Okay. Then I'll, then I'll say. Then I'll second.
Let's be clear, so you made a motion.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing, not all is fair, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is board appointments. She's going to get baptized.
The clerks, what's got me.
With the Board of Equali- Equalization and Review, each commissioner is to nominate one person to serve on the Board of E and R on their behalf. It's my understanding that Vice Chair Harden has the list of names to present for a vote.
I sure do. Uh, we would like to present Andy Dedman, Mike Philback, Marvin Hutchinson, uh, Gary Hastings, and David Allen.
I'll second that.
All right. The board, you've been read the names, so I won't try to recite those. And they've properly motioned and seconded any discussion or questions? All right, hearing, not all is fair, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries unanimous. Next item is a closed session. Closed session per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen dot eleven, A four, to discuss economic development matters related to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by Cleveland County, including an agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the county in negotiations. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
Set.
Under one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A four.
Set.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, we're in closed session.